Well, the Pasadena Area Community College District come to order. Following our closed session this evening, I have one announcement. I am reporting the vote taken by the Board on July 22nd to give instructions to our council to make an offer of settlement to Dr. Mark Rocha. The vote was five to one with trustee Brown voting no and all other trustees who were present voting yes. I, trustee fellow, was absent and did not vote. At its closed session on August 6th, the Board gave additional direction to council regarding the offer to Dr. Rocha, which was unanimously approved. All Board members were present. Thank you. Ms. Brown, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. Please say. I'm a good afternoon. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Do we have some introductions tonight?
I do not. I have a couple of recognitions, though.
Okay. Do the Board have any introductions this evening? We'll have some recognitions.
Yes, I just would like to take a minute to recognize a bunch of people, some of which are here, some of which are not here. But I would like to recognize the staff, of which there was a great number, who participated in incredibly successful Welcome Day today. All right, not today, but a couple of Fridays ago, but a Welcome Day event. And these are folks that are Career Center job developers, librarians, or associate students, several faculty, financial aid representatives, police, facilities, outreach, just a whole number of people in our transfer center and other places, including our pathways and our FYE program. And I just wanted to let the Board and the public know that it was an incredibly successful event, and we probably served, without exaggeration, 10,000 or 15,000 students who were on campus that day. So thank you to everybody for that. The other thing I'd like to do, if we could just put that slide up that I was talking about. So this is our Math Jam 2014. And this represents over 1,300 students who participated in the Math Jam activity this summer. And that doesn't even include what we call the I-Jam, the Design to Media Tech students and Design Jam, and a number of other things that we do. And I think I really want to just point out the fact that this is a team effort by many staff, teachers, counselors, coaches, and tutors who helped make Math Jam what it was. And particular thanks to Jay Cho, who is a faculty member in the math department, who is also the director of Math Jam this year, Brock Klein, and so many others. But this is an indication of how far PCC has come in recent years. This program started out with about 300 students. It's up to 1,300 this summer, but more importantly, we'll have over 2,000 pathway students this fall. So I just wanted to start with that. So I'd just like to recognize those groups. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is the time for public comments on non-agenda items. Ms. Waugh, do we have any?
Yes. Jane Hallinger.
Welcome back, Jane.
Well, thank you. As you know, I always have to come at least once, or twice.
You have three minutes.
Oh, wow, okay. I just wanted to say, on behalf of many of the faculty that I've talked with, we do not want to have a divisive situation with our Board or with the people in the school. We want to work with people, and we want to share the shared governance process, again, with all of you. And so I would hope that we could start out this fall with that idea of cohesiveness and not the separation that we've had that's been so difficult for all of us. And I'm not excluding you either, but it's been very difficult for us the last several years. So, a new look, a new year. We'll work together, we hope. And one more thing that I'd like to bring up is that I know we have not put back the winter intercession, and I know accreditation is coming. I think I would like to warn you that that may be a major mistake. I spent three years on the Commission, and I know Barbara very well. And one of the things she did when she took over, and I'm not a fan of her, I'll be very, very clear, she said that the community college system was in great disarray, and they needed to be revamped. Now, she's talking about 112 schools. We saw what happened to San Francisco, but it has happened to a number of other schools, too. They're just smaller schools that haven't gotten the attention of San Francisco. Now, Bob Desznik and AFT have a lawsuit that they're working on against the Accreditation Commission for what happened in San Francisco. And if you know, what happened in San Francisco had nothing at all to do with the quality of teaching. And yet, the school has been going through a terrible period where they've lost students, et cetera, because of what the Accreditation Commission has done. I would like to suggest that it's still not too late to put in the winter intercession. We took it out in a short period of time. It's been in place for a number of years. We can put it back in in a short period of time, and that's one less problem that we have when they come to look at our school and our programs. Okay, and the last, and I would not like to join San Francisco in that lawsuit.
You have five seconds.
And I would not like to be the second major college that has a lawsuit going against the Commission. Anyway, one more thing I would like to suggest is that...
Time?
A time slot?
Sorry.
Okay. Well, I won't suggest it then.
Why are we letting her? Go ahead and make the points, since she's come from Colorado or someplace.
Oh, from Colorado, yes, yes.
Goodness, let her...
No, I just returned home to work. No, I just wanted to say that I hope that one of the things that we do, and I just talked with our new head of academic, academic, oh, that we would put back some of the block programs that we had, some of the transfer programs that have been destroyed or decimated over the last few years. We wanted to have programs that transferred easily to four-year colleges.
Dr. Hallinger, your time is up.
And we put them together, and now we've lost them. And so we would like your cooperation and help. Thank you.
Welcome back, Jane.
Thank you.
We have one more speaker. Alan Lamson.
I'd like to pass out a picture of a very prominent former chair of the English Department at Pasadena City College from the old days, when I taught at Pasadena City College.
The last time I was here, it was my pleasure to introduce a student, Marcus Franco, who's an ex-felon, who's gone through the PCC program and done very well, and that was a happy occasion. Tonight's occasion is a little more bittersweet, because Woody Olson, whose picture you will see, you've seen or will soon see, died in June of this year at the age of 99. The picture of him that you see here, he's in his office, in his retirement home at the age of 95, when he was still teaching in the extended program at Santa Barbara City College. Woody Olson influenced a whole generation, including Jane Hallinger, of teachers at Pasadena City College. I was hired in 1968. He was the chair then. He was the chair from 1956 through 1977. And after that, after retiring from PCC, he and his wife Marie, who was an English professor at Cal State Los Angeles, moved to Santa Barbara. And Santa Barbara, Woody, within one year, started teaching in the adult program at Santa Barbara City College. And he actually taught there more years than he taught at Pasadena City College. He was so renowned as a teacher that he won a statewide award in 1995. His classes were always filled, lots of ladies with blue hair, in the retirement home where he moved when his wife Marie started having signs of dementia. His classes always had 40 or 50 students in them. He would teach a variety of courses, some based on the courses that he started here at Pasadena City College 50 years ago, masterpieces of literature, perspectives on the Bible. And then after he exhausted those, he started teaching things that he'd never taught before. Woody was one of the great ones at the college, and yet his beginning was not quite auspicious. He never finished the eighth grade. He became ill and was told that he would have to repeat the eighth grade. This was 1929, and he decided, no, I think I'll help the family out. And so he left school, and four years later...
Thirty seconds.
Pardon me?
Thirty seconds.
Oh, okay. Anyway, he did eventually graduate from high school. He was 21. And then he got a scholarship to Lawrence College, became Phi Beta Kappa at Lawrence College, studied at a theological seminary in Boston, thus his interest in the Bible, and then got his MA at Michigan, and heard that there were a lot of junior colleges being started in California in 1945. So he and his wife Marie made it out to California, submitted 14 applications. Only three schools contacted him, one of which was Pasadena City College.
Time.
And the rest is history.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had a memorial for him yesterday, many of us, and I wanted to take you down that little memory lane.
Thank you.
And we'll adjourn this evening in his memory. So thank you. Do you want to pick these up?
While Mr. Lamson is coming up, I want to honor Mr. Lamson as well. He's a former Academic Senate President, longtime English professor here at the college, and we appreciate your fine words about Mr. Olson. Thank you.
Okay. This is the time for approval of minutes, and we'll take the regular meeting of the Board for August 6th, 2014.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Mann, a second by Ms. Waugh, further discussion. All in favors?
Yes.
On the, okay, the August 6th minutes, page 3, item F, the Veterans Village, it says,
authorize the Pasadena City College to enter into an agreement with Veterans Administration. We had a certain amount of discussion. I tried to go back and look at the tape of that, but my computer is having a problem with YouTube. We didn't, my recollection is that we didn't agree to enter into an agreement, but to look into the feasibility of the various organizations raising enough money so that the package that we were talking about, conceptually, could...
Yeah, it was allowed, it was to allow them to start raising money, but it wasn't an agreement.
Yeah, we'll make the correction.
We'll correct that. Thank you. Okay, all in favors, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions.
I got abstain.
One abstention with Mr. Martin and the student trustee voting in the affirmative. We'll now take up the regular business meeting of August 20th, 2014, wishes of the trustees.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Dr. Mann, a second by Ms. Waugh, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, abstentions, negative votes, with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. This is the time for approval of consent items. The wishes of the trustees.
I have a request to speak on item 7I.
7I? Okay.
I, let's see, I'm trying to find the, okay. I've got a question on 36B, 41B, and 45B. 36B, 41B, and 45B.
Okay, Ms. Waugh.
Eduardo Cairo on 7I.
7I?
Correct. That's what you have here, 7I.
Let me find it myself here. Do you all have it in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to address consent item 7I titled, "Approve Academy of Professional Learning Workshops and Retreats." I request that...
I have a point of order. Mr. Cairo wanted to speak. He could have put a card in and spoke on this item. This is for the Board to raise questions and points. I think it's inappropriate for a Board member to call someone else up. I have no problem at all, Mr. Cairo spoke, speaking on this. He could have written a speaker's card.
I did.
Put a speaker's card on this.
Yeah, he did do a speaker's card.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I misunderstood you.
Does that mean you take back your...
Start over.
Okay. All right. So I'm here to, I'll start over. I'm here to address consent item 7I titled, "Approve Academy of Professional Learning Apple Workshops and Retreats." I request that you either reword the consent item by deleting the word "faculty" or by pulling it from the agenda altogether. Given that as of last week, the administration and the Academic Senate Executive Committee agreed that faculty development is a purview of the Academic Senate, not any other entity, and that we have also agreed in principle to reconvene a shared governance committee, the Professional Development Committee, which currently has as its co-chair Terry Hampton, our executive director of Human Resources. However, the way this consent item is worded, it states that you are authorizing Apple, the Academy of Professional Learning, to conduct professional learning activities for faculty, staff, and managers. This is in opposition to shared governance regulations. In addition, this consent item does not clearly identify the total amount to be allocated. Thus, prior to your approval of this consent item, I ask that you specify the total amount allocated for the Apple workshops and retreats. For you to approve this consent item in its current state would destroy the goodwill that currently exists between the Senate and the administration. Thus, once again, I ask that you either eliminate the word "faculty" or pull the item altogether to allow you to give this issue a deeper examination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cairo.
Do we want to address his points while the situation is in front of us?
Yeah, I can certainly speak to that. First of all, thank you, Mr. Cairo. The administration and the executive committee of the Academic Senate had a very fruitful discussion regarding the Academy of Professional Learning and the purview of faculty development under CAPM or under Academic and Professional Matters. And the long and the short of it is, is that there was a significant agreement to bring back into being, under the shared, under our shared governance college council structure, the Professional Development Committee. In that regard, APL and all things related to professional development, with the exception of compliance items that come out of Human Resources, will fit under the umbrella of the Professional Development Committee of the College Council. In this particular case, this is a routine matter to put money, make money available for the various workshops associated with the Academy. I think what I would recommend to the Board to consider would be, to honor Mr. Cairo's request, we could remove the word "faculty" for now, approve this request so that we've got some funding to move forward with the activities of APL in relation to managers and staff, but know that we hear, Mr. Cairo, we hear, you know, we're heading in the right direction on this. So that would be my recommendation. Go ahead and remove the word "faculty," approve it, and then we'll keep reporting back.
Is that fine with the trustees?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries with student trustee voting in the affirmative. Okay, Dr. Salvage, 36B.
Right. This is the contracts. On the second page of the contracts, there's a Long Beach Community College, $75,000, continue operation of, and hosting of small business development. How does that tie in with our program?
I might ask one of the Board members who are in the SBDC presentation to speak to that if they care to, but basically what this is, is the second year of the funding that we receive through the Long Beach City College from the Small Business Administration in the amount of $75,000. We had a thorough discussion with Board members regarding the SBDC trustees, Thompson, Waugh, and Brown were there. I believe that there is a, if you will, a comfort level now with the SBDC and the things that we're doing. A little later on tonight, you'll see a presentation from Dean Davila regarding economic and workforce development and our career pathways, trust grants, and how the SPD sort of fits into that. So I believe that this simply is a second year extension of this grant, and we would recommend approval.
This is $75,000 that we are paying to Long Beach?
To continue our partnership.
No, it's, right, it's money that we receive.
Oh, okay. Big difference.
Okay, thank you. 41B.
The property management, does that, that's just for these residential properties that we own, and does that include marketing and leasing the properties, advertising them, or just managing the properties once as a tenant?
It includes advertising, leasing, managing, rent, it's the standard property management services that these companies provide.
Okay.
45B?
45B.
I have a question on 41B also.
Yes. John has.
I was just a bit confused. Is this going, is this awarding the contract to these people, or is it just using them as a reference that they're doing it now and allowing us to set up the process to solicit it?
That is what it is, the latter. This is a solicitation.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Thank you.
45B, the three bids were received. The low bid was $540,000. We're being asked to award that, authorize awarding that contract. The other two bids were over 20% higher, but the low bid was also, let's see, the project estimate was $855,000. We're being asked to award at $540,000. So the estimate is 58, almost 60% more than the low bid. It indicates here that the scope was changed, but what was the estimate with the change in scope? I'd like to see on these contracts consistency between the dollars that were being asked to authorize for award and the scope that the estimate is tied to.
That's correct. Mr. Smith, our executive director, Facilities and Construction Services, will respond.
Yes, the, initially, the project bid was included asbestos abatement, and we found that it was more cost-effective to do asbestos abatement in the entire R building for other projects, so we actually de-scoped that work from the bid. This project was initially bid, and we had, we only had two responsive bids, one who had withdrawn because of an issue with the bid, so we actually went out to bid. We never reestimated the job and reduced that cost estimate, taking out the amount of work that was over $100,000 in asbestos abatement for that particular location.
So I'm not sure that that responded entirely to Dr. Salvage's question. Go ahead.
Let me see if I understand. We're being asked to award a contract for $540,000. Is this one of those contracts that came before us, before, where the guy had withdrawn his bid a few months ago?
Yeah, we actually asked to reauthorize bid, so...
It was that one?
It was one of these, yes.
Okay, right. And, but the 855 with asbestos abatement should be reduced by about $100,000?
The bid, removing the asbestos abatement, came in at about $720,000.
Okay, 540 is the low bid, 720, and we're comfortable with the low bid being a third below our estimate?
Yes, what we did, what I did with, we reviewed that, and we were concerned that bid was extremely low compared to the other two bids, which came in very close. And if you look at the unforeseen, potential unforeseen conditions and challenges of that project that may come up with change orders, that project could go over, you know, $700,000 if you look at the other two bids. So what was done with director, purchasing director, George Sidiac, we actually brought in all three of those firms, and we questioned them extensively on how they arrived at their number, if they were comfortable with that number. And each one of those firms were very comfortable with that number, and the low bidder was very comfortable with his number and how he arrived at the number, feels very confident that he can get it done at that price.
First California's done workforce before, right?
Yes, we're actually in a project with them now.
Yeah, right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
So move.
We have a motion from Ms. Waugh and a second from?
Ms. Brown.
Ms. Brown, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries with the student trustee voting in the affirmative.
President fellow, just to clarify something, going back to the SBDC thing real quick, the $75,000 is actually an expense item, but it's a matching to the grant, and we didn't make that clear in my response. So it is $75,000 that we matched to their $75,000, so that's why there's an expense there. Thank you.
We'll now move into the action items this evening. Item F will be taken out of order. So item number G is public hearing and adoption of the proposed 2014-2015 budget and fund allocations. The public hearing is open.
I have a speaker on item G, David Shioji.
Good evening, Board. My name is David Shioji, and I'm an architecture student here at Pasadena City College. I'm here on behalf of my department to show our opposition to the policy that prohibits instructors from also serving as instructional aides. For several years, our department has been ably assisted by one of these affected aides who regularly assisted and critiqued our work and became another teacher to us. Aides like these are very important to learning since our, since our field of study is much accented by another person. So I just would like to ask you all to bring back our aide to our department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Public hearing is closed. So item G?
Thank you, President fellow. We have a thorough but reasonably brief presentation by our executive director, Business Services Joe Simoneshi. It is under tab G in your binders.
My name is Joe Simoneshi. I'm here to speak about the proposed adopted budget. We have the PowerPoint presentation. There are a number of slides, so I am going to go through it. Please feel free to interrupt if you have questions, or if you'd like to hold off for your questions at the end of the presentation. Whichever works is good for me, if it's good for you. So the budget presentation, it's recommended that the Board of Trustees hear a budget presentation by a district no later than September 15th of each month and either adopt it or and adopt it so we can submit it to the state for approval. So this is a running total of the 14-15-01, or Fund 1, general unrestricted funds for appropriation as of August 14th. So for 14-15, we had a beginning balance of $19.1 million. We are estimating an income for 14-15 revenue of $128 million or $129 million across all funding sources. That's the state, federal government, and local resources. And we have a total Fund 1 general unrestricted funds of $148 million. This is a little hard to see, but it's an actual breakdown of the 13-14 adopted budget, the actuals for 13-14, and the proposed adopted budget for 14-15 in the green column. And this slide is a part of the budget package that has been out for public consumption and a part of your board packet. So this is a comparison of fiscal year 13-14, which just ended June 30th, and our 14-15 budget and the increase that will be coming in. So in 13-14, with prop $30, we had $123 million. For 14-15, we have $129 million, which is a budget increase of approximately $5.6 million. So additional revenue available for fiscal year 14-15 is $5.6 million. This is a running total of the amounts of money that will be coming into the district. We are looking at $899,000 for the cost of living allowance, or the COLA, which is 0.85% from the state. We have restoration or growth that we have budgeted at 2.75% for fiscal year 14-15. There is a... There is a potential for 3.75% growth, but we are being conservative in our numbers and our projections. In fiscal year 1314, we have the trailing summer deferral for 1415. And what that means is, we had two summer sessions. We had summer one, and we have the trailing summer. The trailing summer began in fiscal year 1314. However, the census date for those courses did not happen until after July 1st, which means that we will receive that revenue in fiscal year 1415 and not in 1314 as we have in the past, in the previous years as we have in the past. So the total estimated revenues and the rollover again is 5.6 million. So this year, for 1415, we had a number of cost increases, substantial cost increases. We were advised several months ago that our benefits increases were going to go up 2.4 million. The majority of our staff and families are on the Anthem PPO policy, and that policy, the original rate increase came in at 27%. Our third-party administrator, Keenan and Associates, actually began to negotiate that and were able to get the provider down to 17%. That was the largest increase that we had for our health and welfare benefits. But in total, the increase is 2.4 million. Starting in this fiscal year, 1415, there is a CalSTRS increase, and there is an increase of about $400,000 that the employer is mandated to pay into the system. For CalPERS, we have about $77,000 that will, that the employer must provide towards CalPERS for all of our members. These expenses are, or this list and the next slide is a list of all of the new expenses to the district. So the cost of living allowance, even though the district is receiving 899,000, the district sunshined an offer of half of the COLA for salary schedules, and that's an equivalent of $449,500. We have fiscal year 1415 supplemental early retirement program costs that we have to budget for in 1415, district-wide professional development, we've put some funding aside for that, equipment leases for our office services operation, School of Health Sciences program accreditation, we built in dollars for those, statewide association of community colleges, we had an increase for our property and liability coverage, college advancement initiatives, and we had fleet fuel cost increases. We continued with looking at dollars that were needed by the district and budgeted for those items with instructional equipment for all categories. We're putting aside $0.1 in the amount of 500,000. Workers' compensation fund, we are funding that an additional 400,000 a year. District-wide unanticipated costs, we're putting funds aside for anything that may come up that we did not expect or anticipate. We have funds that we've put aside for accreditation support and institutional effectiveness evaluation and survey equipment. So all in all, we have about $12 million that we needed to find funding for in the budget. So this is a running total of the total revenues, that 5.6 million. The total cost increases and expenses of about $12 million, which meant that we had to find about 6.4 million in the current budget to meet our obligations. So to meet the our obligations, the district looked internally to the object codes, or the object, I'm sorry, the cost centers that we had, looked at the object codes within the budget, and started to reallocate funds to meet our needs. We looked at line items and the object codes for advertising, computer equipment, repair and maintenance, supplies and materials, and we were able to reallocate to meet the district needs for that difference of 6.4 million. So again, a running total, we had two, total new revenues of the 5.6 million, yes?
Yeah. We had a, I'm the chairman of the Budget Committee, and we had a good session with the financial people going over the budget. And the 6.3, 6.4 million here, this is essentially what we need to reduce from somewhere on the budget. And it's by, this reallocation is actually, we're making a reduction somewhere in the budget cumulative total of that amount.
That's correct.
And the second page here, that's, those are the areas that were reduced.
That's correct.
Correct. So a running total, we had two, total new revenues of that 5.6. We had a $12 million need, which meant that we had to find 6.4 million, and we were able to do that by looking at the current dollars within the budget and reallocating those funds to meet the district needs. We also wanted to highlight that there are anticipated revenues coming into the district. However, they are not guaranteed, so we did not budget them, but we are hoping that there would be deferred funding that we may receive no later than July of 2015, which is next fiscal year in the amount of 1.8 million. From fiscal year 1213 and 1314, the district still has not received redevelopment agency funds or RDA funds in the amount of about 3.5 million.
Has there been any information since we had our budget meeting about the RDA funds?
No, we actually checked a couple of days ago, and there's still no information about it. It's just one of those things that are bogged down in the courts and also by the speed in which the counties are reporting those revenues from the local redevelopment agencies.
Thanks.
No, the successor agencies, no.
This slide shows a total compensation percentage of the income to the district and the percentage compared to the expense of the district. So in 1213, we projected 90% as a percentage of the income for compensation, and it actually, the actual percentage was 87%. For 1314, we projected 90% as a percent of income, and it actually came in at year-end closing at 89%. With the shifting of the funds within the line items of the budget, we are projecting an 86.2% of income related in comparison to the income coming into the district. This slide and the following slide is just a breakdown of the fund balances as of the end of fiscal year 1314. These are all of the funds for the district. We have Fund One, which is the unrestricted fund, and that balance of that 19.1 million. We have Fund 41, or Capital Outlay Fund, and a balance of 5.2 million. I can't actually see that far. Fund 43, scheduled and deferred maintenance, we have a balance of 1.5 million. And again, these are the fund balances as of 1314. For Fund 59, fingerprinting services, we had a balance of $21,000. And for Fund 74, Student Financial Aid Fund, this is interesting, the district actually received in 1314 about $35 million, and we handed out $35 million in financial aid.
How does that compare with previous years?
I'm sorry?
How does that compare with the last couple of years?
It's in line with, it's, it's a slight growth over previous years.
We continue to grow in our financial aid allocations as the number of students who come to PCC are, get some type of financial aid.
Is it growing at the same rate that the number of students or the courses being taken increases, or are they getting?
That's one of the correlations. The answer is yes, but there's other reasons as well. It depends on the need of the students and the students who come to the college and what their needs are. That's probably the bigger indicator.
If they're the same type of students, then you'd expect to see that just grow with the enrollment.
That's, that's true.
Because basically, we've got the same kind of students, just more of them.
That's, yes, I think that's.
Some get the aid.
That's correct.
Ms. Wa.
On this reallocation of Fund 43, or the ending balance, I guess, how is it that we're so far off? Is it already allocated or encumbered and just not spent?
For Fund 43?
43, where you have a 1.5 fund balance.
Uh huh.
Yes, the answer is, we just did not expend much money in that, in that fund. So we began at 1.4. We had revenue of 276. We had just a small amount of expenditures while we were working our way, working through the state and determining what projects could be funded, what they would approve, what they didn't approve. And so last year, I think, Ruben, could be called the year of planning more than anything else for that particular fund. Is that fair enough?
So, and there, we're not deferring maintenance then to reallocate this fund, is that?
No, that is correct. We just, because it's a, working with the state, we've got to get permission from the state on various projects, and that takes time.
So this slide is showing the actual Fund 41 capital outlay projects. We started this fiscal year with 5.2 million, and this is a list of the facility projects that we will be moving forward with. We have, and they're the estimated dollar amounts for each of these projects. So there are 17 projects: library modernization, grounds irrigation equipment, faculty office renovations, green space improvements, campus-wide heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, and community education center computer labs.
And I do want to note the asterisk by the item number three, Veterans Resource Center and Veterans Affair Clinic. That syncs up with what trustee Selvage said earlier. This money is subject to board approval, the allocation of these funds.
I have a question.
Ms. Brown?
What? And item 10?
Yes.
What exactly are we doing for international students renovations? Could you give me an example?
Yes, I can. We anticipate growth in our international education program. We anticipate the hiring of an interim dean of international education and the need to expand space for them. So at the present time, there is a significant amount of unused space on the second floor of the Child Development Center. And the idea, and these monies are being put aside to renovate that space to build a larger international education office area and also student gathering location.
Thanks.
So the projected cost for these 17 projects is a little over 2.1 million from Fund 41. We also have, out of Fund 41, our information technology project list. So we have three main items and then a subcategory of items under each one of those umbrellas. So we have Lancer Point. We have smart classroom upgrades, which is a continuation of our previous year's projects. And then campus-wide technology upgrades, campus-wide desktop computer upgrades. This is part of our refresh program where we are looking to refresh desktop computers every five years. This is, out of that $810,000, it's going to replace approximately 400 desktop computers. So this portion of the Fund 41 cost is just under 1.1 million. So the running total here is for facilities, 2.1 million. Information technology, 1.1 million, for a grand total of 3.2 million, which will leave in the Fund 41, $2 million as a year-end balance. This is a slide that shows a recent reserve and balance study that was conducted by the LA Community College District, and we just wanted to show you how Pasadena fares compared to other districts. Now, this obviously isn't all community colleges in the state. However, Pasadena, for fiscal year 1314, our reserve was approximately 10%, and we had approximately 5.7% in a reserve for contingencies, for emergencies or urgent needs that came up throughout the year. Part of this presentation is also bringing to light the future budget risks. So we are now starting to look at a variety of items that will be coming up in future fiscal year cycles that we need to start paying attention to. We're looking at benefit and healthcare reform increases, the CalSTRS increases and the CalPERS increases, and we are looking at the Educational Protection Account, or EPA, and the expiration of those increased state sales tax and income taxes. And then finally, there's a performance-based funding conversation that's taking place at the state. So for benefit and healthcare reform impacts and the district financial impacts, if we were looking at an 8% medical trend from 2015, excuse me, through 2020, if we did absolutely nothing prior to the healthcare reform, the district would go from a $12.6 million cost for benefits to a cost increase in 2020 of 18.6 million. If that's, that's if we had absolutely no change and prior to the Healthcare Reform Act. Post-healthcare reform, we are looking at, for the calendar year, I'm sorry, policy year of 2015, an increase of 13.1 million, I'm sorry, an increase to 13.1 million, but more substantially in the year 2020, an increase to 23.4 million if we made no changes to our policies. This slide is showing the increases for CalSTRS and the district financial impacts for all of our funds, not just Fund One. For 1314, the employer-mandated contribution was 8.25%, which meant that we paid out in 1314, 5.1 million. In 1415, that 8.25% increase to 8.88%, which is where that $392,000 comes in that we showed a little in a previous slide. By fiscal year 2018-19, we are going to go from an 8.88% employer-mandated contribution to a 16.28%, a almost double percentage, which will mean that the district will be paying 10.1 million. So we're going from 5.1 to 10.1 million in the next five years. As a comparison, we also wanted to show what the employees who are a part of CalSTRS, they too are having a employee contribution change. So for 13, for 12, 1415, they're currently, or they were currently paying 8%, and it's now going up to 8.15%. And then in 2016-17, they would have been paying 8%, but it's now going up to 10.25%. So that is the contribution that the employee that is in CalSTRS will now need to make. For CalPERS, we are showing what the employer-mandated contribution would be. So in 1314, it was 11.442%. We paid in 1314, 2.6%. That is now going up to 11.771%, which is where that $80,000 increase for employer contributions came from in an earlier slide. But in 2018-19, we're going from 11.771% to 18.20% and a cost comparison of 2.7 to 4.2 million for employer contributions. The Educational Protection Account, or the EPA, is expiring. There are two different sales taxes, one is, I'm sorry, two different taxes. One is the sales tax and one is income tax, and they expire at different times. So this is simply a chart that shows what the estimated income would be to the district and how it depreciates over time and when the two taxes will no longer be in place.
Yeah, so are these kind of, are these in line with those numbers that I made?
They are in line with the numbers that you provided.
Are they pretty close to that?
Yes. So we are looking at, for 1415, a 16.3 million estimate. It will be determined what that actual dollar amount is closer to the end of the fiscal year. But in 1617, the 0.25% sales tax increase expires, and then at the end of fiscal year 1819, the tax increase expires, income tax increase expires. So this is just a running total of what we anticipate and what the impact to the district would be. And then performance-based funding. One final area of potential risk to the district funding is the concept of performance-based funding, which means that FTEs payments will be based on a series of metrics, specifically an individual district and the students in the district service area. This relates to basic skills instruction, workforce education needs, four-year transfers, and specific associative science and associative arts degrees majors. The specifics of these metrics are still being developed by the Chancellor's Office and the Department of Finance, with significant input from community college leaders in the state such as CEOs, CBOs, CIOs, and chief student services officers. Yes?
Yeah, one point here on the, the items that we've just gone through. If we go back to slide 22, future budget cycle risks or changes. This slide 22 and these items that are enumerated here are really a big deal.
Yes.
These are, this is a big deal for us. The benefit healthcare cost reform increase, that's, somebody's called that, some people have called it the Obamacare luxury health plan tax or something.
Counter tax.
The retirement funds obligations and the part of PCC are going up, that Obamacare tax, luxury tax on healthcare, that's a big deal. The Education Protection Account, well, that's, that's a revenue, but it basically peaks in a year and kind of goes flat and then dropped right off. So we won't have any of that. These are things that we've really got to get serious about thinking of how we're going to deal with in the case of the one, two, three, first three items there on bullet points on 22. Those are increasing costs. The fourth one is a decrease in revenue. So all, you know, coming together down the road, serious numbers. And this coming year, and the Budget Committee will be asking the question, not just what are we going to do the next year, but, you know, what's the outlook and how can we plan for this? And politics might change. There might be a Prop 30 mark two that gets passed sometime. But, you know, we need to look ahead, and I'm glad that we've got all these numbers out here in front of us now.
Thank you, Joe. Is there any questions? Trustees? Dr. Mann?
Well, I have a comment. I want to commend you on that presentation. I particularly like the comparison of where we are with our reserve and then these points that you made. I think Mr. Trustee Selvage had made these earlier, of things that we should be looking for. I think that's very much an improvement. It gives us kind of a view. I very much appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to point out, because we did get apparently an inquiry from constituents about this. I did talk with interim president Miller, and, because I had a question of where the revenue from our rental property was going, and it is buried back here in the fund. He told me where it was. I found it. But next year, it's going to be. But next year, it's going to be clear so that if someone in the community or one of our constituents wants to know where that money's going, it'll be much easier to find the budget. And I commend you on making that change, and I won't let you forget it.
It's okay. We won't. Thank you, Trustee Mann.
I just wanted to comment on our total compensation. We, this was, excuse me, this is something that we have been trying to bring down for a while, and apparently we did.
We are striving to do that, yes.
So that's good.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Well, I just let the board and the community know that the Audit and Budget Subcommittee met for two-plus hours, went through the presentation with the whole staff. We have, as everyone knows, several new people in new positions. And in addition to new people in new positions, we have a new system as they're trying to move this into the new banner system. So anytime you have that many, that much newness going on all at the same time, it's an extremely difficult situation. I just think they did an exceptional job under those circumstances, dealing with all of that, and yet coming up with a plan for us on how to move the college forward. And not only that, but, and perhaps even more importantly, highlighting what's really important, and that is the way the future looks several years in advance. So I think they just, the whole department, Joe and the whole team, just did a sensational job. And I think I wanted to commend them and thank them for all the work they did. All that being said, I feel a little bit like the chosen one who is picked to be able to feast for a year because in one year, they're throwing me into the volcano. And so in some ways, that's the way I feel about this budget. In some ways, there's some monies coming in from past things and here and there. And so for one year, you know, it's kind of all coming together thanks to some good work. But if some big issues aren't addressed, PCC and the community college system along, are going to get thrown into a volcano. And so I think it's, as Dr. Salvage said, it's really important that we just jump right in on what we can do to do our part for the future.
Thank you.
Nicely done.
The recommendation this evening is that the Board of Trustees allocate the funds, adopt the 2014-15 final budget, and authorize its transmission to the Chancellor's Office. The wishes of the directors.
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Brown, a second by Ms. Waugh, for their discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries with the student trustee voting in the affirmative.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to, thank you, Joe. We'll now move on to item number H, which is authorization to transmit the fourth quarterly financial status report.
No, I do not. It is, it is the, well, I do not, but I'll just say it is our standard fourth quarter report. There's nothing unusual about it, and we ask the board's approval.
Wishes of the trustees?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Ms. Waugh, a second from Ms. Brown, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. Action item number I this evening is to adopt Resolution Number 525, approve the GAN appropriations limits for 2014, 2015.
No.
Wishes of the...
And I'll second.
We have a motion from Ms. Waugh, a second from Ms. Brown, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Abstentions. Everyone voting in the affirmative, including the student trustee. Action item number J today is the Board Policy Revisions. Dr. Mann?
Yes, we have two policies that we brought back from last time. The first one is Board Policy 2430. And you may recall, Ms. Waugh raised the question of clarification so that we do not have one person who can, if a trustee has questions that it would, one person could stop it. So if you look on the third page, under where it says Staff Reports, the committee has tried to make it very clear what the process is. The Superintendent President is the Secretary of the Board. So if the Board members have questions, they direct it to the Superintendent President. And it says that the Superintendent President believes that words should be determined. I should have put determines. If the Superintendent President determines that the questions would require some outlay for substantial research, a substantial study, the Superintendent President then sends it to the Board President. The Board President may either say to the Superintendent President, "Go ahead and do this," or the Board President would then take it to the full Board. This is what our policy has been, but it's been kind of jumbled up. I think this makes it very, very clear. So only the Board itself can deny a member access to any kind of information, and this could actually happen in a matter of a couple of weeks. And I hope, Ms. Waugh, I hope that addresses your concern. It goes, question goes to Superintendent President. The Superintendent President, it feels it's a substantial thing, refers it to the Board who either approves it or puts it on the agenda.
Yeah, I thought, I read through the wording, Dr. Mann, and I find it satisfactory.
Okay, thank you. And then I'll just wait till the second one. And the second one is on the Board Education. And I tried to, we, the committee tried to be responsive to Mr. Martin's concerns about all the specificity, about three months of Board meetings. And actually, many of the things listed here are now on the college's website. So what we've done is made this change, and this is in point number four. It says, "Prior to the orientation session, materials pertinent to planning, audits, accreditation, collective bargaining, the Brown Act, and parliamentary procedures should be provided to the newly-elected trustees." And I think those are large issues that I can't imagine we wouldn't do that. And then, instead of listing a large number of topics under the information that we've given in advance, it essentially says, "During the open orientation sections, topics identified as essential components of being effective trustee through training programs and are materials of professional association should be addressed." And my, I think our thinking here was, the league, for example, each year updates its Board Training Manual, and there's a very clear listing of topics that should be covered. And this way, you can simply match it with that, and you will always have the best practice. And the other change in this is we added, if I can find it here, "Members of the Board are encouraged to attend conferences, et cetera, and to enroll in online training programs." Because both the league and the ACCJC have, not the ACCJC, the National Trustees Association now have online training programs, which people can enroll in and become certified. So are there any questions on any of this, please?
Dr. Salvage?
Right, yeah. As I read over this, I agree with the reduction in all those various items that were enumerated in such detail. But I thought that we ought to put in something along these lines for the section that relates to the new trustee orientation, and mine is not yet complete. The, and I drafted this verbiage, "The principal objective of the new trustee orientation objectives are to provide the new trustee with, A, the necessary information about PCC and the processes by which the Board makes informed policy decisions, and B, the information and processes by which the Board, that the Board utilizes to measure performance and determine if its policy objectives are being met." I mean, I, you know, I'm on the board, and I keep thinking about, okay, what am I supposed to do? I'm supposed to participate in making policy, and we're supposed to make sure that we understand whether or not these policies that we announce are accomplished, or if they're not. So, you know, how do we, what's necessary in order to make sound policy? What's necessary in order to make sure we discharge our responsibility, not just to make policy, but also to measure the performance and see whether or not it worked?
Where would you have this go?
And where would you, where would you put that?
The, let's see. I guess right by, let's see, Board.
I would suggest maybe the second sentence.
Yeah, yeah.
It says, "The Board is committed to ongoing development of Board and trustee education includes new trustee..." And then it would say, "The objective is the orientation."
Right.
And then it goes in through there. I would, I would have no problem with that. Do you have the language? And we can give it to Ms. Colross so she can, she can get it.
Everybody agree? Anything else? Dr. Mann, you want to make the motion?
Yes, I move that we approve these two policies.
With the change that Dr. Salvage is suggesting.
But yes, as amended.
We have a motion from Dr. Mann, a second from Ms. Waugh, for their discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Abstentions, motion approves with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. This is the time for information items, and item number K today is the Foundation Celebration Event.
Yes, so I'd like to ask our Executive Director, Bobby, to come to the podium, as well as our Foundation Chair this year, Mr. John Gregory.
Good evening. The PCC Foundation was founded in 1979, but we age well because we're actually older than we look. Our roots date back to 1924. We were preceded by the Scholarship Fund Association, whose earliest scholarships to PCC students were created in the early 1920s. And even today, some of those funds are still helping our students. In 2007, the PCC Foundation merged with the Scholarship Fund Association, which essentially doubled our history and doubled our assets. In 2010, we received a transforming gift, which has culminated in a donation of over $5 million from the Robert and Adrienne Westerbeck Estate, bringing our assets to a total of approximately $23 million. We rank fourth largest in community college foundations in California, following just behind Santa Barbara, Santa Rosa, and Foothill DeAnza. We've had a successful partnership with the college in raising $1.6 million for the Shafford Library, helping secure funding for the Berger Child Development Center, raising $1 million for the Boone Sculpture Garden, Galloway Plaza, and the Jameson Amphitheater, $2 million for the Hutto Patterson Gymnasium, and just recently, $3.5 million for the Center for the Arts Building for equipment and programs. In between these major projects, the Foundation Board has caught their breath and with great resolve geared up for the next major gifts campaign. With the recent addition of more staff and aggressive goals set by the strategic planning process of the Foundation, we are now focusing on maintaining the momentum of our major gifts campaign with efforts in-between campaigns, with fundraising programs to build an annual fund and to increase the endowment for scholarships. This in-between time is where we are now, having just completed the Center for the Arts campaign and celebrating it with our grand opening just this past January. And how do you follow an event like that? Well, we have figured out a way. The strategic plan of the Foundation includes the goal of creating a signature fundraising event for PCC. Last year, I attended just about every fundraising event in our district. 10 pounds later, or more, from chamber events to the Community Foundation, El Centro, NAACP, the Eddie Awards, museums, et cetera, we now know the landscape of events in our community. We know the price points and how the community responds. We've recruited from among our own ranks to find leadership in Bill and Carol Thompson, who will chair a gala event for us. Under the leadership of our new President, John Gregory, we've identified two consultants, Jim Waterson, who's known for his amazing events in local arts organizations, and Nancy Davis, who is current President of the Tournament of Roses Foundation. She knows fundraising and the community extremely well. The Foundation staff, including myself, Chris McPeak, Director of Operations, and Peggy Brickert, Administrative Assistant, which is the same team that put on the grand opening in January, we have the elbow grease now to make sure that this event can sing. Now that you're totally confident that only your wedding will rival the excitement of this event, John Gregory is here with the details.
But not to talk about the three weddings that we had to put together. I'd like to recognize Lonnie Shield. Lonnie, stand up for a second. Lonnie has been very much involved as a basic planning for the beginning parts of this campaign and will help more. And of course, Lonnie was President the last two years. Thank you very much, Lonnie. Well, here's about 99% of what we hope will be the plan for this, for this event. Still have to cross a couple of the Ts, dot the Is and so forth. But basically, what we're looking at is that on May 16th of next year, the Foundation expects to host 400 guests at a gala event in the evening titled, "PCC Celebrates Student Success." Hosted cocktails begin at 6:00 PM at Galloway Plaza. Forty minutes later, our Tournament of Roses honor band will lead guests onto the lawn, covered by wooden flooring, for those that wear heels, on the east side of the reflecting pool, where the following events will take place. First of all, dinner prepared by Pasadena's well-known kitchen of exploring foods. Music by other PCC students during dinner. Videos and very, very, very short speeches, if any speeches at all, honoring the Foundation's major donors of the year, whom I'll mention in just a minute. And there'll be some other videos of campus and classroom life at PCC and other ways that guests can donate in the future to the PCC Foundation. Finally, a spectacular light show by the producers of our gala, as Bobby just mentioned, Jim Waterson and Nancy Davis. Many of you have probably have attended events that Jim and Nancy have done, particularly Jim. And one of the things that we're really delighted about, they're not just producing an event, they are actually coming up with many of the names of new donors that we have yet to be able to, to last so, and some of them we didn't know about at all. But they've been, they've been to so many events that they're going to not just give us the names, but also go with us to make some solicitations for major donors. The Foundation has approved a budget of $200,000 to cover expenses. Ticket price is $250 a person, or $2,000 for a table of eight. We think the 250 is a very fair price when you look at major events that go anywhere from $200 to $400 a ticket. So we think we're priced just about right for that. Most of our revenue, however, will not be from these individual ticket sales, but we're looking at getting those from sponsors who will be asked to donate amounts between $2,500 up to $25,000 and even $50,000. Net proceeds of $100,000 or higher will go towards scholarships for our students. We will honor three or four major donors to the Foundation. Peggy Phelps and Bill and Brenda Galloway have already agreed to be honored. We'll be talking to the Boone family and Adelaide Hickson within the next two weeks. Those are the bare essentials of what we plan to do with, "PCC Celebrates Student Success." We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions?
Let me just add, if I may, please, that really, the Foundation is just a shadow of what it used to be. Bobby, since joining it, has done a fabulous job. Lonnie Shield, last couple of years, the President of it, has done amazing work. And John Gregory is taking over and running on full seam ahead. And so the gala next year is going to be a major event. We want to have it on campus. We want people to come here and be able to see the beautiful campus we have and to recognize that and to become donors of it. So we'll be looking to all of you for your support. I mean, Carol and I are honored to be invited to be the co-hosts of the event and everything like that. So we really look to all of you for your support. And if the phone rings and says Bill Thompson's calling, you'll know why.
Anything else? Dr. Mann?
I was just going to say, I have been to events that Jim Waterson has put on, and they're always, they're always spectacular. And he does little events, and he does big events, and he does great big events. And I'm sure most of my colleagues here particularly, some of them, did not attend the California Democratic Party's victory celebration for President Obama in Washington, D.C., that night of his inauguration, beginning his first term. This was a huge event. I didn't attend it either, and Jim Waterson was responsible for it. So he, in a sense, is in this group on the left, he's maybe the top fundraiser in the country. We're very fortunate to have him here and for him to do this. I'm very pleased about it.
Yeah, Jim is a terrific citizen of the community and really marvelous when it comes to putting on parties and things like that. And he, as John and Bobby were saying, he has a list of prospective donors that anybody would die for to be able to get their hands on. So he's a tremendous asset to this.
When is this event?
May 16th.
2015.
On the calendar.
The campus is actually in-between commencement and the start of summer session at that point. So that'll be that Saturday, right in between.
Okay, thank you both for being here.
Absolutely.
Now move on to item number L, Center for the Arts, placement of art.
Yes, exactly. And while I asked Ruben to join Executive Director Abrams, I also want to lend my words of appreciation to Lon... to Lonnie and John, former President, current President. Under their leadership and under the leadership of Executive Director Abrams, we have made enormous progress. We had an excellent meeting with, if you will, a plan-giving consultant and other types of things last Friday. Dr. Bell and I met with Bobby and the consultant and our Associate Vice President of Strategic Planning, and the future is bright, and we've got great leadership, great volunteer leadership, as well as great staff leadership, and I think this event is just one small example of that. I know that there's a lot on the agenda, so I will move us along. In your package, board members, you should have a document that looks like this. It's in relation to placement of art on campus. We've had to make a couple of changes. I'm going to ask Bobby to briefly speak to these changes, and Ruben is there for support if needed. And then, I think what we'd like is the board to just be aware of this, and if anyone has any concerns, to let us know, otherwise, we will move forward in this manner.
Basically, Alex Quisellis and I made a presentation to you about a year ago about planning, the placement of art. We were doing that in preparation for the grand opening. Some of the pieces had to be delayed in being placed for reasons either that the place itself was no longer available, or there needed to be some repair work done on the art. I've itemized these three delays for you, and we just wanted to let you know that we're looking to place the Eric Orr sculpture just slightly south of its intended location, just south of the Jamison Amphitheater. The Ken Price piece, which is intended to be an outdoor piece, we're actually quite concerned about its safety being outdoors, so we'd like to put it inside the Center for the Arts with a Plexiglas cover that would keep it from being tampered with. And then, the Noguchi Table and Chairs that was donated by Peggy Phelps, we had intended that to be on the east side of the Center for the Arts. She took a tour of the building at the time of the grand opening and really would like this piece to be interactive with students, so instead of bolting it down and putting it in a place where it might not get good traffic, what we'd like to do is put it on the grassy area that's just west of the Center for the Arts, and that would require a concrete platform. So if you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, we'll proceed.
Thank you very much. And then move on to the Career Pathways Trust Grants.
Yes, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, Dean Davola is going to come and actually give a long-delayed presentation to the board regarding the Career Pathways Trust activities and grants activities. And he's going to do this in the context of an economic and workforce development scenario. So I'm going to, without further ado, turn it over to Dean Davola.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Board Trustees of Pasadena City College. Thank you, interim President Bob Miller. I wanted to present tonight about the Career Pathways Trust, but I wanted to make certain that the full perspective is provided and of why this is being an opportunity that PCC was able to obtain within the construct of the California economy and our local economy. So that's why you'll see this extra twist in it, and I believe we have a study session.
And I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry for interrupting, but in your white package tonight are copies of this PowerPoint presentation, if you want to use it to go along. Thank you.
I want to mention that we have a study session tentatively planned in the future where more data and more information that's going to be gleaned over in this presentation will be addressed at a future session. Economic workforce development has been a term that's used in our community college system quite a bit, and it's something that PCC as a community college is meant to serve our constituents in its regards and its outcomes. So it's a specific view of what we do here within our college mission. An overview definition, or working definition, of economic and workforce development, it's essentially the strategic engagement of regional partnerships towards alignment of programmatic offerings to support local industry and labor market needs, to maximize the opportunity for student employment, industry training, and of course, the economic needs of our constituents. So it's a very interesting facet of how we align ourselves to, within a partnership, to achieve these bigger goals. So if you can allow me to explain a bit of the scales that we're talking about here. This is not just one program, it's not one office, it's not one dean. This is all of us. So we can start with a larger perspective. We have a local economy for which there's a labor market, people get hired to do specific roles and jobs. That is ever-changing, and it's always a very fluid and dynamic venture within our society. I attend yearly Los Angeles County Economic Development forecasts and projections on wages, on jobs, on industries that are coming in or that are coming out. I invited a couple of our leadership here, our community college, to attend such meetings. We also have databases that we employ to look at jobs, how many people got hired, how many openings have or currently. I can tell you to the ZIP code who's getting employed and which jobs and their earning potential. That's how much these databases are these days. Also engage with our Workforce Investment Board, our Foothill Board, for which I'm a board member, I attend their quarterly meetings, for which very informative sessions on information of workplace-type of topics are discussed. And of course, our SBDC, which is engaged with industry with more than 30 companies a week to understand their particular needs. Of course, what you see here in our college is a lot of our programs. They don't have to be CTE per se, it's really any one of our graduates, but I did put CTE programs because they do involve a lot of our grants, are provided for the proper alignment to that particular local economy, and of course, our labor market. And then ultimately, of course, our students. The engagement with our students is very complicated. It's more than just offering courses that are aligned, it's actually developing a pathway, a consciousness of a career, such that I'm responsible for reporting to the state how many middle school children within our district have been exposed to a career guidance workshop. It starts at eighth grade for, at least for me. So it's developing that pathway from middle school to high school, and of course, ultimately to PCC if they choose to come here, and ultimately to their place of labor. We've developed a new facet in our portfolio here within PCC, a Work Experience Education Coordinator, for which is a new faculty member to also address the student needs in this alignment. As you can see, there's multiple scales here that we operate for economic and workforce development. We do have many components within our college already, and I just wanted to do a really brief sort of splatter of what we already do. In many of our schools, we have our programs. For example, the school that I represent, the School of CTE, we have also the SBDC, Contract Education with Industry Partners, Work Experience Education, as I just mentioned, SATEA Funding, which is a grant, Title V Funding, which is also a grant, and the New Career Pathways Trust, which I'll go in just a second. But the School of Health offers very similar offerings, School of Science and Math also has similar offerings. And then, of course, new to our portfolio is our non-credit options with our new AB86, Adult Pathways Grant, and of course, meant to the short-term training, vocational training that happens there. So we have a lot of this already. Particularly for what we do in career tech, as I like to brand our school, I went a little deeper so that you can have more of what the programs we have to offer, the grants that are managed within our school, the different industry partners that we work with, the SBDC, Work Experience Education in contract in particular, and the partners that we associate ourselves with, the Foothill Web, Sangreal Economic, Saguero Valley Economic Partnership, the Pasadena Chamber, and of course, a new member is Innovate Pasadena, which is more of a high-tech representation. So how does this differ, what's our change into economic workforce development planning? Well, last year, we had our Vice Chancellor, Von Quinlevin, give a new direction for economic workforce development for the Chancellor's Office in what she terms "Doing What Matters." It's a campaign that essentially is four steps: Give priority, Make room, Student success, and innovate. And so it's very programmatic that we are supposed to respond to the labor market needs and data, Make room, meaning provide the right growth for the programs that are necessary for labor market. Ultimately, student success is data-driven, and of course, the student success task force that is involved, and to innovate new ways to provide training for the workforce. And that's, as I mentioned, Work Experience Education and much of the grants that you'll be seeing within this presentation. So this is a very dense graph, even though it looks like a whole bunch of circles there. This is my first attempt to develop a priority, one of the first steps in this Doing What Matters campaign, where if you have a copy of it in front of you, the size of the circle, just to explain that really simple concept, is the economic impact of our CTE programs here in Pasadena City College. What I did is I claimed every grant, any person who obtained a certificate, who graduated or who is confirmed to be employed, and just multiplied by the average hourly wage of that particular program and quantified it, hourly wage for the whole program graduates of last year of that program. So the bigger the circle, the bigger economic impact that program is having in a local economy. Okay? The actual scale that you see there is essentially an index that we engineers like to do quite a bit. We develop indices to inform us. It's a priority index, and there's about six or seven variables in that configuration, things like labor market, how much, how many students graduate, the economic needs of the enrollment, excuse me, the economic needs of the industry, our proximity to those industries. There's a lot of data in there. So by no means because there's a lower priority doesn't mean that the program is not viable. That does not say that. It may be that we're meeting exactly what the economic labor market needs by that program. It just doesn't have a higher priority than others. Does that make sense? So we were just meeting the labor market need. As a matter of fact, all of these should go down to zero priority in my indices because we're meeting labor market need. The higher the need, that means that we're not meeting the labor market need. And of course, you see the other indices, the vertical is the number of jobs out there. So I'll give you the one example, business management, it's high need, high priority, a lot of jobs, but you can see how we're doing with the impact in our local economy. Okay? So these are the type of metrics that the Doing What Matters campaign is asking us to respond. The next chart is just a real brief overview of labor market analysis of existing jobs to the graduates collectively in the LA County. And then, of course, the green bar that you see there is essentially a positive or negative attribute to the labor market. Again, this does not indicate whether or not a program should be sort of preferred, it just means that if we have a program that it's a very tight labor market need where there's a negative correlation with the labor market, in this case, it would be the bars to the left going to the left-hand side. Our programs just need to be that much better so that our students graduating from that program have a chance within that tight labor market. So this is a way to see how many jobs are out there and how many total graduates there are in LA County within that job. So another piece of metric that we're using is our incoming students, because that's also a measure of need from our perceived notion of our students claiming their major now with our new banner system, which is thankful to that ERP program that we can garnish the majors that are claimed. And so you can see out of the 16,617 students who apply to PCC, which not all of them, of course, came here to the fall, about 26% were in the School of Career Tech majors that were claimed, the largest one being Business, as you see there. And I did further studies later on, and actually, I looked at all the CTE programs within the respective schools. Of course, the School of Health Science was a good part of the 55% you see there. It turns out that 47% of students coming to PCC claimed a CTE major. So just to indicate to you, the labor market is also a student market of the needs. I put this one in here because I just looked specifically at STEM majors. STEM is typically pegged as a high economic growth fields in general. It's only 10% in this case of the applicants to PCC, and you can see that the majority of them were in the technology sector. And by the way, I'm using definitions by the Department of Labor. STEM is a very broad definition, I'm using the definition specifically by the Department of Labor. So science, math, and of course, engineering are very specific. Technology may include programming and other aspects of our industry. So 70% were technology-based, for which we have three major programs claimed, Engineering Technology, Biotechnology, and Computer Information Systems. And I put this out there because the two largest majors that are claimed for students, which are actually the Engineering Technology and the CIS, is exactly what the Career Pathways Trust was actually focused on, so we just hit it right on the nail. When we submit our applications, it's because of the labor market, and it turns out, without even knowing, that the students themselves know that's where their jobs are at. So I was happy to see that. And by the way, 35% of STEM jobs only require an associate's degree or certificate. So finally, to the Pathways Trust. Pasadena City College is one of the 12 community colleges in the state of California that obtained the largest grant funding, which is $15 million. And I believe we're the only community college, I haven't verified, but I believe we are, the only community college to be in two of such grants of the $15 million amount. We're actually the fiscal end one, and we're partnership with Long Beach for a second, which I'll cover in a moment. But what is in this grant? What is it about? And I try to succinctly put it in these three bullet points. The Career Pathways Trust is meant to transform the way we deliver instruction for our pathway alignment, our CTE programs, to our labor market by doing these three things, what is called link learning, work-based learning, and lastly, a new role called an intermediary role that I'll explain in a moment. So what is linked learning? Linked learning is a buzzword that means multiple things. Succinctly, it's a way to alleviate remediation needs by contextualizing math and English. In other words, how can students learn math and English within CTE-applied, project-based type of activity? Hence, you see a lot of project-based activities in there, real-world projects that are being addressed, and some of our students take this to the nth degree. Trustee Salvage was at the Art Center not too long ago witnessing how our students within the class are competing against graduate students of Art Center after four levels of work-based link-learning instruction. So it does work. It accelerates instruction and accelerates development of the skill set, but most importantly, it's linked with alleviating remediation. In other words, they can learn the math and the English through this. Lastly, link learning is also many support services like coaches and counseling, as well as using data to make informed decisions of how to help students. Work-based learning is something I mentioned just a while ago, I have a video at the end to demonstrate further what that is, but it essentially is the engagement of industry partners with real problems. This last bullet point, the intermediate role, is something quite new. Luckily, with Dr. Bell's vision of what he wanted out of this school, he just said, "Go engage with industry partners," and so I did. So it was very easy for me to then reach out to our industry partners to then help me play what's called an intermediate role, where essentially, this engagement with industry is very much hand-in-glove beyond just advising. The intermediate role is a third-party person within the industry partners, the community college, and then a third party that essentially is going to validate that we're actually fulfilling the needs of our local economy. Someone's going to hold us accountable, basically. So they're going to do industry engagement, internship, providing internships, and lastly, developing what is called a skills panel to make sure that the alignment is happening between labor market, community college, and of course, our K-12 partners. So this is what's in the grant, and this is what we developed the grant towards. Now, I do want to stress, this grant is actually largely about high school engagement. We are actually quite intrusively going to affect the way they develop their curricular development because of we're overseeing much of these activities. So these are the sampling of things that PCC and other community colleges are providing to high schools through this grant. Summer bridge programs, which we initiated our very first one this past summer, after-school activities and projects with nonprofits, sorry, yeah, nonprofit companies helping us out, mentorship programs from industry to community college or community college students to high school, professional development for everyone, aligned curriculum through integrated academics and of course, sequenced through link learning, common assessment, so that if students are taking an assessment in some high school within our district, they can actually receive, for example, credit through our credit by exam or dual enrollment processes. Coordination of work-based learning for our students to engage with industry, developing of the skills panel for the actual adequate skill set that the students need in our local economy, providing for what are called industry credentials, these third-party credentials that we purchased that validate the students are actually performing to the industry needs, technical assistance with data and data planning and cross-systems development. Equipment, of course, is always necessary in many of these professions, and lastly, but most importantly... And lastly, but most importantly, is our dual enrollment program that we're being engaged with our local districts because we're supposed to provide college credit before high school students actually graduate high school. So, coming down to Pasadena City College, like I mentioned, we're in two of these major grants. One is called LA High Tech, and the other one's called AMTEL. LA High Tech, for which PCC is the fiscal lead. There are six community colleges in LA CCD District, including Santa Monica College, and, of course, we're partnering with PUSD as our local pathway developing. Of course, we have multiple staff that we're going to be needing for the actual leading of this particular grant. And the intermediary for that grant is the LA Chamber Bixill Exchange, for which they're highly regarded within the regional industry, and they're very glad to play this role. As a matter of fact, it heightened their cause of how they're going to be serving businesses by actually holding LA High Tech accountable for these particular development. AMTEL is led by Long Beach City College, for which for PCC, we're partnering up with PUSD and El Monte Union School District. So, I sort of positioned ourselves because of Rosemead being right next down the street to actually start the talks with that particular district and using our facilities down there as well. We, of course, have staff, and I'm glad to say that the intermediary for just our little micro-region, Sangreal Valley Economic Partnership is going to help us with that particular role. So, I'm glad to announce that. So, just to give you a couple of opportunities, I really do think that work experience education is the mantra moving forward in this particular process. I'll show the video at the end since it probably makes sense after I conclude. We're linking the metrics to demonstrate economic impact further into our programs. We're going to continue aligning the course offerings with our new applicants that are coming to PCC in our labor market. And about next spring, I'm hoping to bring forth to you here an Economic and Workforce Development Committee fulfilled by industry partners themselves, giving us a realistic view of how we're doing to fulfilling our industry needs. And that's tentative for the spring. Lastly, but most importantly, we have to leverage all this money that we're getting to make sure that it's impactful and developing best practices across the college. And without further ado, I want to give you a little preview of what work experience education looks like with a recent video that we did for some of our students. As this queues up, let's see if it doesn't take a while. There we go.
These maker needed some students who wanted to create 3D models for blind students, and I was interested and joined.
As a small company, we have certain limited resources. We knew about the Fab Lab down the block. I came down and said, "Could you guys do some design?"
I was able to see head-on how much work you put in actually really matters.
We're trying to learn what it feels to be a blind person because you have to do a lot of research, and you have to be in someone else's shoes and try to understand their level.
I learned real. That was fun.
Working with other people is difficult commenting for everyone, so this is a very good experience to work as a team.
This would be the science area. A lot of this space would clearly just be open lot for you to explore if you were a student.
They made a marvelous map of a campus that has both visually impaired and mainstream students. The thing I love about it is that it's fun, and it's cute, and it might help blind kids make some excited friends, too, because it's just kind of a fun thing to be playing with.
There are many things that, just as an individual student, you can't know, no matter how much you try, and it's good to get feedback from everybody and work as a team.
There's also a lot of standards, but also being the first map for a campus, standards are also difficult to follow.
I like working with students because they'll try to solve problems that maybe nobody's really thought about solving in unusual ways.
I think from this, I could get better connected with what it's like to go beyond the classroom.
I think it would help me if I ever wanted to do some freelance work in the future.
What excites me about working with this is the opportunity that it gives you, the knowledge of how to work with organizations, knowledge of learning how to use them or help you connect with other organizations.
We're pleased to be kind of a catalyst for the community.
So, I just wanted to point out that this is what work experience education looks like. It's engagement with a real problem. In this case, the customer was LAUSD. They needed a map for their blind students. There was a local business down the street here who needed help for one of their customers. It was our students and our facilities developing the prototype. If you heard the students mention, it's learning beyond the classroom, it's entrepreneurship, being a freelance designer, and then ultimately, it was this idea that they can think in organizations and systems beyond the classroom. We cannot replicate this in our classrooms. The only way to do this is with engagement of our industries. Lastly, I wanted to acknowledge that because we've been doing so phenomenal work with the SBDC, we just received a grant, a $45,000 grant to help more startups, which maybe these students can be one of those recipients of such grants. And lastly, next Monday, September 8th, is the launch of LA High Tech. I want to thank Valerie and her team for helping us organize this and the video that she put together and everything that's happening. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just wanted to commend you for a great presentation, and this is definitely up my alley. This is, it's just about me, it's about my community. I'm not sure about others, but I know that my district will really benefit from this. It's a different way of learning, hands-on, when, you know, folks can think, but many folks, all they have to do is learn with their hands and their mind. We're engaging students early from middle school, if you may, or after, but when you could put an individual, you could engage an individual to stay in school and get a job. It's all about workforce. It doesn't, it is not encouraging for someone to spend four years or six years of their lives after they graduate and are not able to get a job. I mean, that's why the economy is the way it is today. We need jobs, and this model will prepare people for jobs. I am very excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wa.
I also wanted to thank Dean Davila. I think this is, I always feel very excited after I see your presentations, but I do agree with Trustee Brown. I think that, you know, matching what we're doing in education to what is needed in the market is so critical, and I think everyone, our industry recognizes it, everyone has recognized it, and I'm glad education is now on board and we're moving forward. And, you know, I think many of us as trustees have always asked for the metrics and the outcomes, and I think this is really moving us towards that. So, thank you very much for all your work.
You're welcome.
Mr. Thompson?
Just want to add to that, this is something that Trustee Wa and I have been after for about 18 or 20 months to have presented to the board, and we've had the advantage of having some private presentations and discussions about the small business development project and everything. And I agree with Trustee Brown, this is something that's critically important to students, give them a reason for going to school, a reason for learning, and hope that once they get out, they will have the opportunity to be employed and make some money. And I think that's very, very positive. One thing I think we need to all keep in mind is that we need to make sure that we have enough money coming into the program to make it successful, and we don't want to end up spending more money than we have coming in. So, that's really critically important that you have a business plan and put together on this, and I'm sure you do or will have that, and we want to see that as well pretty soon. Thank you.
Mr. Salvage?
Is this, this is PowerPoint presentation, is this online on our website as part of the agenda package?
No, it's not public at this point.
But we can get it to you and put it up there.
Thank you. Sure.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, now move on to the Fall 2014 Enrollment Report.
And as Dr. Scott comes up here, I just wanted to take the opportunity to, again, thank the folks who worked on that presentation, but, you know, there's three things in there that were very critical. One is this notion of the three schools working together in terms of economic and workforce development. The second feeds into what Kathy's going to talk about right now, which is enrollment and how we make sure that we get the students that we need in there. And specifically, from a legislative point of view, dual enrollment and the importance of the Holdén bill, which is going to come back next year for further discussion. And then, the last thing from a budgeting point of view is this whole notion of performance-based funding. The funding going forward is going to fund programs such as the ones that Solomon explained and defined today. So, as our funding models change, we need to get ahead of that curve as well and prepare our programs so that they comply with where these performance-based funding formulas are going to go. So, with that said, I'm going to ask Dr. Scott to do briefly an update on where we are because I know time is short here, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Good evening, trustees. This will be brief, partly because our census is Monday, and after that, I'll be able to give you more specific information. So, this is just an update on what I gave you last time with some data that we have from enrollments and headcounts. And I'll be sharing this presentation with Dr. Ariano, who will come up in a minute. All right. This first slide is a review of what I presented two meetings ago. It shows our 1415 FTES targets, and, again, this is a review. For 1415, our base on which we are funded is 21,341. The state will fund 3.75% of base as access growth, which is shown there as 800 FTES. We also have the potential of additional access growth, which is noted at the bottom. It's an opportunity for us to capture the growth that other colleges may not be able to realize, and so we're targeting an additional 440 FTES. And our total target for 1415 is 22,581.
And let me interrupt just for a second to say that this information is under Tab N in your notebooks, for those who are trying to follow along. And then, also in your white binder, there is a presentation on PCC at Rosemead Student Survey Summer Information that Dr. Ariano will be presenting.
On the next slide, it shows our targets by term. On the credit side, on the second summer session, we targeted 1,257 FTES. And just for the record, our first summer-- Thank you. You're welcome. --was 1,763. Our fall target is 9,398, our spring 9,126, and for our first summer session, it's 1,500. And we've defined the summer sessions below. The second session is those that start after July 1st, and the first summer session is the classes that start before July 1st. And for non-credit, our targets are 91 for the second summer session, 575 for fall, 500 for spring, and 134 for the first summer session, for a total of 1,300. And that's how, those are our targets to reach the 22,581. Since my last report, I do have some numbers to give you. Again, our second summer session target was 1,257, and our projected FTES is 1,301. So, we are fairly sure at this point that we gained an additional 44 FTES. For fall, our target is 9,398. Right now, we are estimating that we will reach that by one, 9,399. And the strategies that we have used to get, to reach some of this growth, we have added in 93 high-demand classes, and this has occurred within the last five weeks. We have canceled--
Is that 93 more?
93 more additional sections in the last five weeks. And we've canceled 79, and at this point, it's about 82 low-enrolled classes. If we look at the comparison between Fall 13 and Fall 14, we can see some of the growth we have achieved and the growth that we hope to achieve. Starting in that first column, FTES, our projection again is 9,399. For fall, we achieved 8,969. So, we are projecting an increase of 430 FTES from last fall to this fall, which is an increase of 4.8%. Our headcount, and as you see from the asterisk, these numbers are taken from the end of the first week of class. Our headcount for credit only was 26,586, and for fall, it was 25,036, for an increase of 1,500 headcount, about 6.2%. And, again, our strategies, careful enrollment management leading up to the start of the semester, adding in high-demand classes and canceling low-enrolled classes. Over the last few days since the semesters have started at the various colleges statewide, the CIO listserv has, people throughout the state have been projecting what they expect their college, to achieve at their colleges, and the enrollments from the 31 colleges that reported on this listserv seem to be reporting fairly soft enrollments. And most of the colleges are adding sections, trying to grow because we have this growth opportunity, but most of the colleges that reported are finding that they are not growing as much as they had hoped, and they are not going to achieve the growth that they think that they are. And out of the 31 colleges that reported on the listserv, only two had growth that were higher than Pasadena. So, and those were not in this area, they're not colleges competing in our service areas. So, I think Pasadena's doing well right now in comparison with what I see across the state. And Dr. Ophelia's going to come up, Ophelia or Briana is going to come--
Let me ask a quick question. I'm sorry. So, why did you attribute that the other colleges are not growing? I think I missed what you're--
You know, I think some colleges are not in a place where they have enrollment to capture. I know I came from an area that just didn't have that kind of growth. They were trying to grow, but they just, they don't really have the population, and they maybe aren't doing outreach well enough. PCC has an excellent reputation, so students want to come here, and it's a draw, and we have the ability to capture from other areas.
Thank you.
Ms. Wa.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. I did have a question on the, when you talk about the classes that are being canceled, I think all of us sometimes get some complaints from the faculty that they feel their classes are being unfairly canceled. So, I couldn't figure out, is it that they don't know that they need to advertise, or what's, I mean, is everyone aware of what the process is?
For canceling?
Well--
Why are the classes needed?
Low enrollment, I guess.
Why are they low enrolled?
You know, sometimes things are different from semester to semester, and we don't really know why. We try to make adjustments when we see low-enrolled classes. You know, for example, if there's five sections of something and they're all maybe 60% filled, I'm going to look at those and say, "Okay, maybe we're offering too many sections of those." So, we make adjustments for the next time. It could be that certain majors are just more popular, the ADTs are coming online, the transfer degrees, those may be drawing people into other areas. And so, we project as best we can based on prior enrollments and what we see the trends are, and you can only project so much. You do your best, and sometimes students don't do exactly what you expect.
But I guess the question is, if, it seems to be a surprise to some of the instructors all of a sudden that they there have low enrollment, or so do we notify them ahead of time and say, "Look, at this point, you know, you have low enrollment. If you don't get, you know, you have the extra amount of time to try and find if there's enrolled, interested students?"
We start notifying the instructors about four weeks prior to the start of the semester, and the instructors can see the enrollments online as well, but we do call them, contact them, tell them that we're concerned about the class. At that point, some of the faculty say, "Please move me to a section that will be okay at a different time or a different course." And so, we did that with the faculty members who were willing to do that. Otherwise, we gave people additional two weeks to try to recruit students for those classes, and two weeks prior to the beginning, we did start to cancel, but we worked closely with the faculty, the deans calling people, trying to do as much as we could so that people were moved to classes that fit and were classes that students needed.
Beginning under Dr. Ariano and now with Dr. Scott, this is what I would call active enrollment management, very proactive enrollment management, and looking to be as efficient as possible with the dollars that it costs to generate this FTES. The more efficient we can be, the higher the individual class enrollments, the greater revenue that comes in to support even more class-- revenue that comes in to support even more classes that are needed. Also, there's a big focus on, obviously on completion and mounting courses that help students complete, whether they're capstone courses in certain areas, or whether they are specifically aimed at moving people along more quickly in either transfer or to degrees. But it's just very active enrollment management.
And I've been working with the deans also.
It's leadership and the department chairs.
That's correct.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Dr. Scott, I'm curious, is there a number that you look for before you cancel? I mean, is there 10% enrolled, 20%?
We're looking for 60%.
So 60%? And the students that are already enrolled when the class is canceled, do they get notified and said, oh, you have to go to this class?
Yes. Yes, they are notified. Yes.
And that 60% is not magic. There are classes that we have to, that we have to continue with because they are capstone, or they are absolutely necessary. So we try to stick to that, but when there's a need, we go below that.
Dr. Salvage, do you have a question?
Thank you. Anything else?
Dr. Mann?
At some point, I would like to see a chart or something showing the times a day when the classes are being offered. I remember we've seen at times that, like at noon, there's this huge drop because classes aren't offered, or didn't used to be offered during college hour. There were certain times in the afternoon classes aren't being offered. Are you, are you looking at that also, the time at the classes?
Yes. Well, we're trying to make sure that we have a variety of times for students with different needs. But sometimes, some times are more popular. The mornings are popular, and sometimes the mid-afternoons are not. And we do look at that, and when we're doing enrollment management, we say, okay, all the morning classes are full, the mid-afternoon classes are not doing particularly well. Do we have a classroom? Can we move this one over here? And then we look at that data when we're creating the next schedule, so that we know that that time wasn't particularly popular.
And so the answer is, Dr. Mann, we will provide that information for you. And I think you'll be pleasantly surprised at the progress that we've made in the last couple of years on that, on that day part issue, including Fridays and weekends.
Okay, that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Okay. And I'd also just like to say that in canceling the classes and adding the classes, I've been working with the deans very carefully, sitting down with the deans every week. You know, I'm new, so explaining to me which classes absolutely have to be part of the degree, and some of them may be low enrolled, and we do hang on to them because students need to complete.
So at this point, Dr. Ariano, let's do the Rosemead update real quick and move things along. Thank you, Dr. Scott.
Well, she's getting ready. I'll just comment, as much as I appreciate the science behind this, I'm guessing that there's a very artistic part to this problem. And having Dr. Scott, and having the opportunity for her to experience it as the one in charge a few more times around is going to be very advantageous for the college.
Absolutely. And I'm going to ask Dr. Scott to come back up and finish her presentation. It's only a couple of slides, President Fell, I promise you, but on Rosemead. I think this is the survey, but we left a few slides out on Rosemead, which is the data part that I think everybody's very interested in.
I just get delirious hearing this because I spent half of my life dealing with enrollment. It's pretty difficult.
Okay, I'll try and go through this quickly. Good evening. This past summer, we decided to do a survey of our students enrolled at Rosemead. Of course, we had less classes, less students, but we did receive responses from 329 students who were enrolled this past summer. Quickly, in terms of just an overview of the demographics, reflecting the Rosemead area, 32% of the students identified themselves as Asian, 32, I'm sorry, 42% is Asian, 32% is Latino, 9% is white or Caucasian, and 17% in other groups. It was an even split in terms of the respondents, 165 males, 164 females. 91% were between ages of 18 and 30. 86% of the students indicated an educational goal of transfer. Surprisingly, 31% of the students enrolled had not previously taken a class here at the Colorado campus. We asked in terms of their overall impressions of the Rosemead site. 97% indicated their impression of the quality of education as excellent or good. 95% were likely to recommend PCC Rosemead to friends and family members. 90% rated instructors as all or mostly approachable, helpful, and supportive. 84% felt their courses were stimulating. 55% felt their courses were worthwhile. And if I can add a little notation, I believe this was really reflective of a limited number of offerings during the summer. We don't, we didn't have as a robust schedule as we do now, fall, and then planning for spring. Students, again during the summer, 35% preferred three-unit courses over six weeks versus a 12-week summer session. 31% prefer to finish their courses before noon, especially during the summer term. 84% had not used counseling services. 38% reported not knowing about counseling services. 72% indicated satisfaction with the services that they had received. Some other student feedback, students requested more access to academic counselors and assistance with financial aid forms. Some requested a student store and food services. Several reported difficulty in obtaining information from our PCC Rosemead site on the general website. And that's quickly, just an overview, if anyone has some questions. Yes?
Utilization of services, 84% had not used counseling services. Is that counseling there at Rosemead, or just counseling?
No, counseling at the Rosemead site. We had limited counseling services, but again, this was during the summer months where we had a limited number of offerings.
Okay, very quick. Okay, so I'm going to ask them to bring up, bring back that last presentation real quick. And if they don't have those slides on the system for some reason, I'll just verbally go over it, but I think it's critical information.
Trustee Brown and I have two questions, or each of us has a question.
I had a question.
Ms. Brown?
Just quickly. What was the number of students attending summer?
Ooh, I don't have that number, I apologize. The headcount? I don't have that number.
Okay.
And you have 38% didn't know about counseling. Why is that?
We didn't ask real specific questions. We just asked them that they have utilized specific student support services, and we asked if they were aware or used counseling, and 38% said they did not.
And regarding the 55% that responded that they felt courses were worthwhile, so this kind of tags onto the question I keep asking, when will we send a survey out in the community? And while this primarily will affect trustee Martin's area, certainly trustee fellow in my, my area, Area 5, we have quite a few students who go in, who would, that's a good central location for them.
Correct.
If we can respond to that, let's go ahead and just finish this up real quick, and then we'll respond to the question after that, trustee Wa. I think Kathy can finish this up real quick.
Okay, do you want me to just quickly go over the non-credit enrollments, or?
Are you going to go through these slides, or whoever wants to do it?
All right. For Rosemead, as you know, we opened Rosemead in the middle of fall last year. And so the comparisons are not really apples and apples, but I did want to show the growth there. For fall 2014, we're projecting 516 FTEs as compared to 94.32 in fall of '13, an increase of 422 FTEs and 448%. Again, it's not a true valid comparison, but I did want to show you that. The enrollment as of the end of August, 8/29, was 4,387. In fall of '13, it had been 879. And the strategies, we're offering a greater number of high-demand GE courses, we're collaborating with Rosemead High School to offer biology and chemistry lab courses, reaching out to the general community. Rosemead currently, most of our classes are high-demand GE from all major disciplines, including sciences, arts, humanities, English, and math. We're offering some CTE out there, including business, administration of justice, accounting and paralegal, some basic skills courses, English, math, and ESL, and a refined non-credit offerings, including parent education and ESL. In the future, we will try to add additional high-demand GE classes. The schedule is really, the enrollments out there are quite high this year. Most classes are closed, it is very, very busy. We may look at also adding additional basic skills classes and additional CTE. Okay, and that was the survey. Let me just go back. Our total headcount as of the first, end of the first week was 29,005. As of today, it's 29,180.
So to address trustee Wa's question, Associate Vice President Coroner and Crystal and others are working on a strategy to develop the best way, the most cost-effective way to basically survey the communities of Rosemead and Temple City and the surrounding areas as we go further here, working with the Rosemead Chamber and others. And in fact, Dr. Coroner provided me a draft of a document yesterday that looked at a number of the contacts that you had provided us and how we might begin to do it. So we've got kind of a white paper being developed now about how to survey that area, and we should be able to report something back to you fairly soon.
Okay, you know, and this just springs a little on your pitch for the dual concurrent enrollment. I also am an advocate of the dual concurrent enrollment. I've been talking it up to my K-12s. My superintendents are interested, and I hope all the other trustees are talking to their K-12s. I do think it's really important that, you know, it's one of the, it's on the governor's budget for student success, it's also in chancellor's student success scorecard. So I think that, you know, I think that this is something that we could, it leverages an opportunity for us.
I agree. And thank you. So I think that, oh, sorry.
There was one final slide that --
Well, on your slide, you showed the comparisons. It says September 29th, 2014. Is that supposed to be August? Where it says 4,387 under enrollment for fall, that chart, is that supposed to be August, or?
Yes, the Rosemead slide?
The comparisons, Rosemead, under enrollment has as of 8/29/14?
Correct. That is correct. I don't know where that slide is.
I'm sorry, it's correct?
It is correct. That was, that was the enrollment as of the end of August, just a few days ago.
Okay, thank you.
And it is correct.
Okay, I think.
I think that well does it. Thank you.
Thank you both very much, appreciate it. And I think, just in wrapping up very quickly, there's a research finding document as well in your packets that the Office of Institutional Effectiveness put together. It's a narrative of what we've done. And in general, the attempt here tonight was to alert the board that Rosemead is moving along in the right direction, and we'll keep doing that.
Thank you. For item number 0 today, we just wanted to remind you to make an appointment, I think it's just Mr. Thompson and myself have to do that, so if you get that done. And did you have any more to add tonight on your report?
No, that's it. The superintendent's report, thank you very much.
Announcements by shared governance, Mr. Roscoe?
So hi. Nothing really big coming from associate students besides club week, which is coming up on Tuesday, September 9th through the 11th. We're expecting to have close to about 75 to 80 clubs show up here on campus. Some of those are new, some of them are, have been established here as well, so we're really excited for that. And we also have, September 12th is going to be Mexican, at the actual Mexican Independence Day. We will be having festivities out on the front. We're trying to get some mariachis and some churros, so that way we can educate our students about a cultural event. And that'll be held on September 12th, and we also have a couple of other events coming up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan or Ms. Albright? Classified Senate?
Hi, good evening, trustees. I wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Gracila Carangella. I'm the new Classified Senate Board of Trustees representative, so I will be attending the board meetings on behalf of the Classified Senate. We have been collaborating with the Academy of Professional Learning on establishing classified staff activities for Professional Learning Day, which is also known as Flex Day. That will be held on October 1st, 2014. We had a very successful welcome classified luncheon, which was held on August 12, 2014. On that day, the classified staff who attended was surveyed as to a variety of topics that they would like to learn about. And among the workshops that will be available on Professional Learning Day, they're based directly from those requested topics that were surveyed by the classified staff. And I would also like to thank trustee Salvage for attending our welcome day luncheon. Lastly, the Classified Senate will host our Fall General Meeting on October 30th, 2014, to which we are now preparing for, and we would like to extend a warm invitation to you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cairo, the Academic Senate?
Thank you. The Academic Senate this coming Saturday will be holding its Senate Retreat, and one of the key points will be to address the goals that we'll be having for this year. And we're looking forward to having our Flex Day, October 1st, which we've, I mentioned last time, when we, we look forward to seeing the new interim president and the AVPs, and have them introduced to all the faculty. And I've already spoken to some of the AVPs, and they're going to be willing to answer any questions that the faculty might have. So we're looking forward to having a very productive Flex Day and as well as Senate Retreat. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Dave Douglas, Management Association.
Thank you, President Fell. We had a busy day today. We had our monthly managers' lunch, where we sort of reviewed some of the output from our retreat we had two weeks ago. Thanks to Dr. Coroner for presenting some of that. We had a little active engagement on behalf of the managers around that. And I also want to thank President Cairo for organizing a meeting this afternoon, where we sat down with all three shared governance groups and talked about how we can move forward with building some greater collegiality on this campus.
Thank you very much. We'll now turn to the board. Mr. Lewis, do you have anything to add?
Nothing.
Dr. Salvage?
Right. The Boone Family Gallery has a, has an exhibition up right now of work by PCC architecture students. And it's an outstanding exhibit, and I encourage everybody to go by. The Boone Family Gallery is open from sometime mid-morning until 7:00 or 7:30 at night, Monday through Friday. It's free, and you can get an idea of some of the really great work that PCC's architectural students are doing.
Thank you very much. Ms. Thompson?
Yes, on November the 11th, again, we're going to have a Veterans Day celebration in front of passing City Hall, and we're expecting the passing of City College pep band, some variation of that at least, to perform again as it did last year. And it's going to be a very exciting time. We're hoping to have a very significant main speaker, hopefully a general of the Marine Corps, to come and be our speaker and fly over and things like that. So put it down 10:30 on November the 11th on your calendars, passing City Hall, right out in front of it.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
Actually, I have one announcement. On August 29, I had the opportunity to attend the Job Hunters Boot Camp hosted by Congresswoman Judy Chu. And to my surprise, our director of our Small Business Development Center was there in full blast. She had a wonderful class. We had maybe about 30 or 40 students, all wanting to know what kind of services we were offering at that center, and she just reeled them in. So now I think she's going to have more business than she can really afford. I learned myself, from an entrepreneurial perspective, what the center has to offer. So I was very happy and impressed to see that we are getting into the community. Thank you.
Swah.
This four dates to calendar, on September 13th, the South Pasadena Chinese Club will be having their Autumn Festival. On September 13, the South Pasadena Chinese Club will be having their Autumn Festival from noon to 4:00. And PCC will have an information table there. So, invite all the trustees and the PCC community to attend. Once again, on September 17, the Los Angeles County Superintendent will be having the Superintendent of Instruction Candidate Forum at 7:00. It will be in Downey at their premises. And that will be a debate between current Superintendent Tarleksen and Mr. Teck. So, I hope you will all attend. On September 22, you all have an invitation in your packet from the Avatar Corporation. They are hosting a dinner. And they're proposing to get a group of at least 400 schools together to form a solar grid. I thought it sounded... Although Laxda did not co-host it and lend our name, we did send out the information. I thought it sounded very interesting. I encourage my K-12s to attend, and I encourage all of you to look at that. And I think it will be a very interesting proposal. And then, on September 27, a group called Healthy South Pasadena will be hosting an event which will engage kids of all ages, but especially to address issues of bullying and then the violence issues and the recent gun issue. And there's the superintendent has asked that they... We not do anything that creates any more anxiety for the kids. And so, what we're doing is tagging on to sort of the line that's on the metro stations. If you see something, say something. And so, it's about creating safe spaces for kids to come out and to be able to report, or anyone to come out and be able to support and know where to report in a safe space. So, when I get more information on that, I'll share that, and I hope you all will attend.
Thank you, Dr. Mann.
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Martin?
You began our open meeting by making an announcement. And I just wanted to clarify that in that announcement, it mentioned a vote on August 6. It was unanimous vote. And I think you meant unanimous vote of all members present, as I was absent that evening. So, I just want to clarify that for the record.
Thank you very much. I just have two things I'd like to add tonight. I'd like to do a shout-out and thank State Senator Ted Lieu, who put together a bill in Sacramento that colleges for profit, such as the University of Phoenix and all other two-year and four-year colleges, should be transparent, that they should be open to the public, that accreditation procedures should be also open. And the state legislature voted for it, except for one vote against it. And it was State Senator Lieu who authored the bill. And the reason he voted against it is because an assemblyman up north decided that a profit community college in his district should be exempt. And lobbyists came forward, paying legislators a number of enough money, that it was added to the bill. And he became very irate that said every community college, every profit college could be exempt from the bill. And he voted against his own bill. And I think that is a courageous act, and I have great admiration for him. The next thing I'd like to add is that, and I think I brought this up last year, is I'd like when we have the budget before us to be the only item on the agenda. It could be the second meeting, the first meeting of the month. The budget is the most important thing we do. And I think we should be able to spend more time with that instead of having everything else in the way. Okay. Proposed future agenda items. We will now adjourn to a closed session. And this will be in conjunction with Government Code 54957, the appointment of an academic management interim superintendent and president. Thank you. We will adjourn tonight in memory of Woody Olson. Thank you.
Excuse me. There might be a possible action to follow, the closed session?
Yes, you're welcome to stay. I don't know when closed session will be finished, but you're welcome to stay. Bring your sleeping bag. Bring your sleeping bag. We'll all take advantage of it. It will be, definitely. What happened in closed session tonight, the board has appointed Bob Miller to be the interim superintendent president. The vote on the appointment was not to exceed 18 months. I want to thank both Bob Miller and Dr. Dave Douglas. These were two outstanding candidates. We had some good discussions. And I think PCC will be in good shape with both of you. So, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.